So let's start with a word of prayer. Lord God, we thank you for another evening to come together to study your word. And pray that in this time that you would guide and direct us, that your spirit would speak to us, that you would give us insight and give us the strength to make the changes where we need to in our lives. Before we ever try to change somebody else, that Father, we are looking at our hearts before you. Father, I thank you for the testimony of your word, that just on every page we see how holy you are. And we see the holiness that you're calling us to. And as we read what could be very troubling things, that you would strengthen us, give us courage, that these things have been written not to bring about fear, but to bring about boldness. That our faith is in you, that our very souls are in your hands. And Lord, we gather together in your name to read your words. And we pray that through this, you would draw us nearer to your heart. And pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen. Alright, so we made it to verse four of chapter seven last time. Just breakneck pace here. And I was reading from Dr. Schnabel's Forty Questions About the End Times, which is, I highly recommend it. And that whole series is actually really good, really balanced. And what we came to, actually, you know what? Let's go ahead and read chapter seven again. It's been a week, and let's go ahead and jump into the actual text. And then we'll come back and I'll talk a little bit more about the 144,000. So starting at verse one, chapter seven. "After this, I saw four angels standing at the four corners of the earth, holding back the four winds of the earth, so that no wind would blow on the earth, or on the sea, or on any tree. And I saw another angel ascending from the rising of the sun, having the seal of the living God. And he cried out with a loud voice to the four angels, to whom it was granted to harm the earth and the sea, saying, 'Do not harm the earth, or the sea, or the trees, until we have sealed the bondservants of our God on their foreheads.' And I heard the number of those who were sealed, 144,000, sealed from every tribe of the sons of Israel. From the tribe of Judah, 12,000 were sealed. From the tribe of Reuben, 12,000. From the tribe of Gad, 12,000. From the tribe of Asher, 12,000. From the tribe of Nahptali, 12,000. From the tribe of Manasseh, 12,000. From the tribe of Simeon, 12,000. From the tribe of Levi, 12,000. From the tribe of Issachar, 12,000. From the tribe of Zebulun, 12,000. From the tribe of Joseph, 12,000. From the tribe of Benjamin, 12,000 were sealed. After these things, I looked, and behold, a great multitude, which no one could count, from every nation, and all tribes, and peoples, and tongues, standing before the throne, and before the Lamb, clothed in white robes. And palm branches were in their hands. And they cry out with a loud voice, saying, 'Salvation to our God, who sits on the throne, and to the Lamb.' And all the angels were standing around the throne, and around the elders, and the four living creatures; and they fell on their faces before the throne, and worshiped God, saying, 'Amen.' Blessing, and glory, and wisdom, and thanksgiving, and honor, and power, and might, be to our God forever and ever. Amen. Then one of the elders answered, saying to me, 'These, who are clothed in white robes, who are they? And where have they come from?' I said to him, 'My lord, you know.' And he said to me, 'These are the ones who come out of the great tribulation; and they have washed their robes, and made them white, in the blood of the Lamb. For this reason, they are before the throne of God; and they serve him day and night in his temple; and he who sits on the throne will spread his tabernacle over them. They will hunger no longer, nor thirst anymore; nor will the sun beat down on them, nor any heat. For the Lamb is the center of the throne... For the Lamb in the center of the throne will be their shepherd, and will guide them to springs of the water of life; and God will wipe every tear from their eyes.' Let's see, so I believe last time we were talking, we had already covered verses one through four with the seal being placed on the forehead. Is that right? We talked about the seal and the four angels, corners of the earth? Did we cover that? It was a lot of information. That's alright. My bad, I didn't write it down. So hey, you know what? We're gonna just start fresh here on chapter seven. Now, I know that I was reading about the 144,000. I just can't remember if I jumped ahead to do that, to read from Schnabel. Alright, well, we'll run through one through three, okay? Especially since nobody else can remember. So that's, we're all on the same page here. It's okay. So, let's see, the interlude. So chapter seven comes as a parenthesis between the sixth and seventh seals, stylistic feature repeated in the trumpet sequence. So that's in chapter 10, verse one, to chapter 11, verse 13. "But not with the bowls," chapter 16, verses 12 through 21. It also serves as a dramatic interlude that delays for a brief moment the disclosure of that which is to take place when the seventh and final seal is removed from the scroll of destiny. Okay, so this is just an interlude here. The chapter consists of two visions, one, the sealing of the 144,000, and the other, the blessedness of the great multitude before the heavenly throne. So a great deal has been written about the identity of the 144,000, as well as the relationship between the two visions. The position taken here is that both visions, both envisions the church, has the church in view, but from two different vantage points. Prior, so that's from Mounts. "Prior to the trumpet judgments, the last generation of believers is sealed, so as to be saved from the destruction coming upon the earth, and to be brought safely into the heavenly kingdom." So the second vision is anticipatory of the eternal blessedness of all believers, when in the presence of God, they realize the rewards of faithful endurance. The visions contrast the security and blessedness that await the faithful with the panic of a pagan world fleeing from judgment. So remember that in chapter six. So in a sense, it answers the question just posed, who can stand? That's chapter six, verse 17. Let me read that again. For the great day of their... Actually, let's see. Verse 15 through 17 in chapter six. "Then the kings of the earth, and the great men, and the commanders, and the rich, and the strong, and every slave and free man hid themselves in the caves and among the rocks of the mountains. And they said to the mountains, and to the rocks, 'Fall on us, and hide us, from the presence of him who sits on the throne, and from the wrath of the Lamb.' For the great day of their wrath has come, and who is able to stand?" Now, mind you, I know we're used to a lot of the churchy language around Jesus being the Lamb, the Lamb of God. But we also need to recognize how absurd it is when we say the wrath of the Lamb. Like, I mean, have you ever seen a lamb upset, angry? Just puts his head down to like ram into you? Like, it's not much, guys, but I have sheep. And so, it's just kind of a funny thing, you know, to see that. But we know what it means, right? We know what that entails, but just don't lose that flavor, right? Of like, oh, the wrath of the Lamb. Now, remember, this is also the lion of the tribe of Judah. Right? I mean, it would totally read different. It was like, oh, the wrath of the lion. Like, oh, yeah, yeah, that's rough. So, but no, it's the wrath of the Lamb. So just, just don't be too desensitized to that, you know? So, alright. So moving into verse one. "After this, I saw four angels standing at the four corners of the earth, holding back the four winds of the earth, so that no wind would blow on the earth, or on the sea, or on any tree." So John sees four angels standing at the four corners of the earth, holding back the four winds of destruction. In apocalyptic thought, the forces of nature are often pictured as under the charge of angels. Later in Revelation, we are introduced to the angel in charge of the waters. Chapter 16, verse five. "And the angel who had charge of the fire." Chapter 14, verse 18. Got a water angel and a fire angel. "The four angels are pictured as standing at the four corners of the earth. The four winds, as destructive agents of God, are a regular feature in apocalyptic writings. The harmful winds were not those that blew straight from the four quarters, north, south, east, or west, but those that blew diagonally." This comes up in First Enoch, chapter 76. In Daniel, chapter seven, verse two, "The four winds of heaven churn up the great sea; and the four great beasts come forth on their mission of destruction." That's Daniel, chapter seven, verse two. In Jeremiah, chapter 49, verse 36, and following, "The four winds carry out the fierce anger of Yahweh upon Elam," the nation of Elam. Jeremiah 49, verse 36, and following. "So in this text, the winds are held in check by the four angels, until the servants of God are sealed. They are not to blow up, blow upon the earth, or sea, or against any tree. Trees are especially vulnerable to high winds, and caught in the maelstrom of a devastating storm could picture the precarious nature of life on the face of the earth." So if the winds were let loose, you have this complete and total destruction. So the Greek text here may be translated, lest a wind keep on blowing, indicating that the winds of destruction have already begun to mount. "And in a semi-arid land, where vegetation withered easily, the seroco, which is a hot wind from the southeast, came to play a part in the presentation of final destruction." Seroco. Hosea speaks of the hot east wind as the wind from Yahweh blowing in from the desert, drying up springs and wells. That's Hosea, chapter 13, verse 15. Zechariah mentions it in chapter nine, verse 14. And Isaiah, chapter 40, verse seven, and 24. For us here, we might refer to the spring tornadoes or the winter ice storms. That these winds are never referred to subsequently in Revelation is one argument for the position that chapter seven, verses one through eight, represents an earlier source that John incorporated into his apocalypse. It is supported by the notion that a Christian writer, in identifying the church as the true Israel, would probably not bother to list a detailed division of the 12 tribes. It's kind of interesting. "Thus some writers hold that John has borrowed a Jewish apocalyptic source in which the people of Israel are protected from some calamity by receiving the seal of God upon their foreheads, and has reapplied the material to the church as it enters the period of final turmoil upon the earth." So the problem with this hypothesis is that John said he saw the four angels holding back the winds of destruction. He saw the angel come from the east with the seal of God, and he heard the number to be sealed. Unless one views Revelation essentially as a literary work by John, based upon his theological insight about the end of the world, then it would appear that the most reasonable way to understand active verbs like see and hear is to take them at face value. So now, moving into verses two and three. "And I saw another angel ascending from the rising of the sun, having the seal of the living God; and he cried out with a loud voice to the four angels, to whom it was granted to harm the earth and the sea, saying, 'Do not harm the earth, or the sea, or the trees, until we have sealed the bondservants of our God on their foreheads.'" So another angel enters the vision, coming up from the east, and calling to the four restraining angels to hold back destruction until the servants of God are sealed. The reference to the east may be no more than a picturesque detail, although some see in it a reminiscence of Ezekiel, chapter 43, verse four, where the glory of the Lord enters by the gate facing east. Others find an indirect reference to the nativity story in The Wise Men Who Came from the East, Matthew, chapter two, verse one. It's a perspective, just throwing it out there. The seal that the angel brings is probably a signet ring, like that used by oriental kings to authenticate and protect official documents. From chapter 14, verse one, we will learn that the mark it leaves on the forehead is his name, the Lamb's, and his father's name. See that in chapter 22, verse four. The followers of the beast also have a mark, chapter 16, verse two, and chapter 19, verse 20. The beast's name, chapter 14, verse 11, or the number of his name. Chapter 13, verse 17. Also could be a microchip. Just kidding. Just kidding. So it's on their right hand or on their forehead for easy scanning when you purchase something. Just kidding. The sealing of God's servants is based on Ezekiel nine, where God instructs a man with an ink horn to place an X on the forehead of all those who are deeply troubled over the sins of Jerusalem in order to protect them from the judgment coming upon the city. Actually, let's go to Ezekiel nine. Just as we're talking about being sealed, and this is one of the clearest references that we have to that. And for some reason, this usually doesn't enter into the discussion when we talk about. Starting at verse, verse three. "Then the glory of God, of the God of Israel, went up from the cherub on which it had been, to the threshold of the temple; and he called to the man clothed in linen, at whose loins was the writing case. Yahweh said to him, 'Go through the midst of the city, even through the midst of Jerusalem, and put a mark on the foreheads of the men who sigh and groan over all the abominations which are being committed in its midst. But to the others, he said in my hearing, 'Go through the city after him, and strike. Do not let your eye have pity, and do not spare. Utterly slay old men, young men, maidens, little children, and women; but do not touch any man on whom is the mark; and you shall start from my sanctuary.' So they started with the elders, who were before the temple." So it's another reference point in prophetic writing of a mark being placed on God's people. So the seal should not be interpreted in a sacramental sense as referring to baptism, as it has been in the past. Its primary purpose is to ensure protection for the believers in the coming judgments. The seal of God in 2 Timothy, chapter two, verse 19, is, "The Lord knows those who are his." Ownership entails protection. "It is the seal of the living God that the angel brings." This designation is frequent in the Old Testament. Upon crossing the Jordan, Joshua tells the people that the living God is among them. Joshua 3:10. Hezekiah calls upon God to deliver Israel out of the hands of Sinacorab, who sent his messenger to insult the living God, 2 Kings 19. "The title is appropriate wherever God is about to intervene on behalf of his people. It contrasts the one true and eternal God with all the false and idolatrous gods of hedonism. The servants of God are not a select group singled out from among the rest to receive the seal of God; they are the full number of faithful believers alive when that event takes place." The angel's reference to them as servants of our God implies that human beings and angels are fellow servants in the service of God. From Keener, in the New Testament Background Commentary, he states, "Like documents or merchandise sealed and stamped to guarantee their contents and prevent tampering, God's servants were to be marked off as his." See a reference, Isaiah 44, verse five. "God had previously protected his people in Goshen during the plagues." Exodus, chapter eight, verse 28, Exodus nine, verse four, and Exodus 11, verse seven. And the idea of a protecting sign is also an Old Testament image. So Genesis, chapter four, verse 15. If you remember that one, that's Mark of Cain, right? And so that was to know that, so everyone would know not to touch him, not to attack him. Also Isaiah 66, verse 19. So here it is taken directly from Ezekiel, chapter nine, as we read, "where judgment could not begin until the foreheads of the righteous, those who mourned over the sin of their land, were marked." So just as we read before. Alright, now we get to verse four. Anybody have any questions so far? Yes. I don't even know if I want to repeat it. Just kidding. No, so the question with Ezekiel nine and the idea of, would the kids be too young? Why do they get gathered into the slaughter, right? So we encounter this also in the text with Joshua. Actually, even in Numbers, as they are moving into the promised land. And they are given those instructions to like wipe everybody out. Now, we've talked about this before. It's not completely genocidal, right? There would have been plenty that would have escaped, would have ran, you know, would have left way before Israel got there. There's all kinds of dynamics about that. And we even see evidence of it later on with some of these tribes that were supposedly wiped out popping back up again. But the idea behind it is to completely rid like the memory of it. And so what's the age cutoff? What, you know, instead of getting into all of that, have they already been corrupted by the culture that they were already brought up in? And I know that sounds super harsh. And it, there is wisdom in it. But there's also... Yeah, it's just... It's a different time. It's not as it is today with our modern sensitivities. Just gonna be really honest. But you rewind a thousand years, whoever you left alive would come back to kill you. I'm trying not to be like... There's just no politically correct way of doing this, of talking about it. But yeah, so you have that level of vengeance that you are opening yourself up to. You know, and that's somebody that like, oh, you wiped out my whole family. I am dedicating the rest of my life to killing you and all of your people. And so it's harsh, especially to where we are today in dwelling in the security that we have and, you know, we don't, we don't ever have to get our hands dirty for anything. But if there are people invading your territory, like coming to your property and attacking you and taking your things, how would you deal with that? And especially if there was no law and order? Right? And so that's the world, that's the ancient world, right? And so, but even in the standards of holiness and things like that, there is a level of corruption that, and like I said before, what is that age cutoff? And we can include all kinds of, I mean, even modern psychology kind of dives into how young corruption can happen and what is carried forth the rest of their lives. And so you could layer in all kinds of pagan occultic practices. And even if you were to take that child and say, oh, we're gonna give you to a loving Israelite family, what of those practices would be remembered and carried forward? And an outright rejection of the Israelite family and their God, Yahweh, and would seek to bring those practices in? So, there you go. I'll let David edit that one on the, on the tail end of this, so. But yeah, there's a lot of times we, I mean, and that's, we read this, and it just seems so harsh. But we can be upset about it, and you could just... Some people's reaction is they just walk away from God. Like, oh, that is not the God I'm gonna serve. And then you can manufacture your own and be the all-loving God and take on any different form and you can do whatever, you know? It just, sky's the limit of what you can make up. But what we read is that there is a holy standard that 99.9% of the time is completely at odds with the rest of the world. And when we don't like it, or when we're not comfortable with it, that's why people usually walk away, is because, oh, I can't change what it says. And instead of them looking at, oh, I need to change. Oh, I need to take this as motivation and to actually like live out my faith to love Yahweh, and to pass that along, and to encourage others, and to have that level of influence, right? Because obviously, that's not a command for us to go out and to mark people and to slaughter the rest of them, right? That's all in God's hands. That wasn't even a command to like the army in, you know, Judah, or anything like that, right? This was all very supernaturally done. But then the principle behind that is that God cares about our holiness. And that is a hard thing for, just, I mean, it should be. It should be a hard thing for each of us to swallow, is what does that holiness look like? Because we don't talk about holiness. And if we do, we set our own Christian cultural standards instead of actually going by the book. It's just my opinion. So, yeah, there you go. Maybe I've wrestled with that one long enough, so. I've seen me squirm enough. So, any other questions? Yes? Absolutely, absolutely. And so, yeah, and the comment was that basically, it just wasn't God's plan in the beginning for everything to fall, for death to enter the picture, for all of that. And so, and that's, that's a whole nother level to this too, is that a lot of times when we talk about death, we immediately think, oh, that person's just going, that's a, straight to hell. There's a judgment. There's a reason there's a judgment. And God can judge what happens in the world to come. And I think we need to be careful. And so even as some of those kids that don't have a mark, who are we to say what happens to them? We stick with what we know and... Right, Noah's ark, the whole world, except for eight people. So, yeah, absolutely. And so as we are taking all of this in, let's keep judgment in the hands of God. Now, we operate on what we know and we know that Jesus is the way. So we're holding on to that for dear life, dear eternal life, right? Because that's what we know. And that's what we share and that's what we're preaching. We're not preaching that like for everybody else, like, oh, God will sort this out. No, we, there's a free pass. We want to hand that out to everybody. It's like standing in front of King's Island and you've just got a thousand free passes. And you're just like, hmm, no, no, no. Hey, have a good day, you know, have fun, drop a hundred bucks to get in, you know? When you could just be handing these out. So it's just the opportunity, I know that was a horrible example, but, but you know, it's something that like we have these passes and we need to share this with absolutely everybody. If they refuse it, then that's on them. We've done our part. And we can just live in the grace that he has given us, not as an opportunity to sin, but to live in holiness and to show the joy of actually experiencing that. You know, when everybody else is trying out all kinds of different sins and suffering the consequences of that, oh, look at that, I obeyed God and avoided a lot of that trouble, right? That's the whole idea of holiness. All right, verse 4. "And I heard the number of those who were sealed, one hundred and forty-four thousand, sealed from every tribe of the sons of Israel." Yes, it is. That's a, so the question is, is that, does that translate into like what we think of, the number that we know of as 144,000? So I can only imagine what you're harkening back to is the numbers game in the Old Testament with Hebrew, which is a lot more flexible as we are talking about, are we talking about 100 people or 1,000, right? That zero just kind of comes and goes, right? And so that's a, absolutely a legit question. We're talking like in Greek and so there is more of a specific number attributed to that. Also, it being followed by 12,000 from 12 different tribes, it kind of backs up contextually with that. Yep, excellent question. All right, so. I'm going to go ahead and read from Mounts and then I will bounce back to Schnabel to fill in the gaps. All right, so no description of the sealing follows. So as in like the angel actually going around and bam, right on the forehead, right? Or catching somebody on the right hand. That doesn't happen, but John does not see, but here's the number of those who have been sealed, 144,000 out of every tribe of Israel. The identity of this group has been extensively discussed. Few commentators interpret the 144,000 as a literal reference to the nation of Israel. But this interpretation seriously complicates the Book of Revelation by bringing in racial distinctions that no longer exist in the New Testament purview. It disregards the historical fact that 10 of the 12 tribes disappeared in Assyria and the remaining two lost their separate identity when Jerusalem fell in AD 70. Is everybody familiar with that, with what I'm talking about? So the 10 lost tribes. So in the Assyrian invasion, so, okay, all right, to back way up here. So we have Israel as one nation, right? And then there was a disagreement over how people were going to be treated. And so then they split into a northern kingdom and a southern kingdom. You have the northern kingdom of Israel, southern kingdom now becomes known as Judah. All right, and so then that carries forth throughout the period of kingships. But about 150 years later, Assyria, so the Ninevites, the people that Jonah went to, right? Which should provide some context for why Jonah didn't want to go. Because these were the people that invaded the northern kingdom brutally, I might add, and systematically like just annihilated whole areas, whole tribes. And the ones that did survive were brought back to Assyria as slaves. Now, mind you, like there's records of this where, you know, their elbows are tied behind their back, like disjoining the shoulders, right? And then hooks were put into their cheeks or even up from the bottom to lead them back to Assyria. Now, generally it was through the cheeks because then if they died along the way, they would just fall along the side and, you know, it would rip out and you'd just hear some dangling behind the cart. And so, too far, sorry. And so, and, but there was a certain... Got to take my nap after I preach on Sundays. So, so anyways, but as they are, you know, this, this is something that Assyria is doing to the entire northern kingdom, right? And so they are not popular with anybody in Israel or Judah. And so when Jonah is told to go and preach to the Ninevites, he doesn't want to. One, he knows God is gracious and kind and that he's, that God is sending him with a message of repentance. And if God is sending you with a message of repentance, you know that something's going to happen. And Jonah didn't want that to happen. That's why, I mean, just to read that book, it's hilarious because he's so disgruntled. He doesn't, you could just imagine him giving this message with gritted teeth and just like, like a spoiled little kid, like I just didn't get my way. And all of a sudden like the city repents. He's waiting on a hill outside the city to see it destroyed, for God to just rain down fire. And he's so upset when it doesn't. That's right. And so, so anyways, when we have, that's the 10 tribes that went to the north. There were two or three in the south, Judah, Benjamin, and the Levites in the south. All the other tribes were in the north. And so that gives rise to the theory of the 10 lost tribes, that they were completely wiped out. Now, what's fascinating about this is that you actually have pockets of like people groups that have been intermingled with local cultures, right? They've taken on a lot of the ethnic characteristics of different cultures, but yet they are practicing things from the Torah. It's just popped up like all over the world. And some of this even ties into the exile from Judah. Because about, let's see, 100 years after that, you have Babylon coming in and wiping out Judah and taking them back to Babylon, right? Following the Euphrates River on around through Assyria, what was Assyria, and all the way down into Babylon, which is modern day Iraq. Then the Persians take over and they let some of them come back, but then many of them stay. Now, there was also a practice that after a region was taken over, they wouldn't just take them back home. Some of them would, but then they would take large numbers of them and scatter them throughout the empire. So that, because why would you keep them all together? They're just going to rebel. But if you separate them out into smaller numbers, kind of water it down a little bit, you don't have much to worry about, especially if you take somebody from the desert and put them in Siberia. That really just squashes a lot of resistance. They're more worried about surviving. And so anyways, but still we, there's groups found in India and a number of other places that practice things from the Torah. So where are these tribes from? What tribes do they herald from? A lot of that has been lost. And then what was regained or retained by Israelites or by, so those coming from Judah, they became known as Jews. That's where Jew comes from, the term Jew, that comes from Judah. And so it was only while they were in their Babylonian exile that they became known as Jews. That's where that term comes from. That's also why if anybody, okay, only about half the time will I correct you. But if you say anything like before the exile about Jews, I'm like, ah, they weren't around yet. At least that terminology wasn't around yet. They were Israelites or they were of Judah, but, or, you know, their tribal affiliation, they were still Israelites. Only when they're in exile do they actually become known as Jews. Okay, there you go. That's where I push up my glasses. Okay, so. So, yeah. Where are these 10 tribes today? Well, we don't know. They're all over, right? But then what about the tribes that actually came back? There were representatives from a few of the tribes. Well, 70 AD when Rome comes marching in, because you know, the Jewish people had been revolting a lot lately. Well, Rome was done with it. So they come in and just level the city. Not literally, but figuratively. Because they just wipe out, I mean, hundreds of thousands of Jewish people. And what wasn't resolved then definitely got resolved in 135 AD. Because it was at that time that Rome came in and just said, okay, we're done. And so that is when every Jew was expelled from that region. And that's when it became known as Palestine. That's the origins of Palestine. Rome came in, wiped everybody out or sent everybody out and just said, okay, this is now a Gentile region, non-Jew. So, so that's the origins of that. And so then everybody was scattered throughout the diaspora. Now, it's not to say that some people didn't know what tribes they heralded from. Paul himself knew that he was a Benjamine, right? We have a full genealogy for Jesus. We know, we know that he came from the tribe of Judah, right? And so there's a number of others. So it's not like all of that was completely lost. But for the 10 northern tribes, that's a lot more difficult to track. So, all right. Now, we will pick up right here with the number and a few other options for the identity of this 144,000, right after the break. Okay, there we go. I don't know what you want to do with that information, but I have thrown it out there for you. One of the questions I had on the break was about the angels that we read in the first couple of verses. And I just kind of moved right past it, but we are now being introduced to some, not just messenger angels as in like delivering a message, but some doing angels. Some get your hands dirty angels, right? And so, yes, that is absolutely in purview. And if you would think back to the Old Testament, Sodom and Gomorrah, those were angels responsible for that, right? And there's actually a number of other places where we see angels coming and not just bearing a message, but exacting judgment on God's behalf. Different translations of the destroying angel in Exodus that kills the firstborn. So there's a few other places like that. So once again, you see an angel, you can be afraid. You can be very afraid. So afraid. That's right. Be afraid until they say fear not. If they don't say fear not, I don't even know if you should run. Like it might just make them mad, even more mad, so. All right. Any other hard questions that I need to be aware of that's going to come up tonight? Thanks, guys. All right. All right, so back to the 144,000. We have discussed in depth the 10 northern tribes that were dispersed as well as the southern tribes likewise, although some came back. But then 70 AD happened, 135. And so now it's literally called the dispersion, the diaspora, right? And so Paul is, that is kind of one of the main reasons for a lot of the missionary efforts that we read throughout the Book of Acts. They are going out to a lot of these groups, to the Jew first and then to the Gentile. So, all right. But the 144,000, we've discussed just briefly. Could this be ethnic Israel? It would just be a very literal interpretation. But now we have, there's an idea that we'll unpack here in a little bit of it being spiritual Israel. But first, we're going to talk about the number being symbolic. So 12, the number of tribes, is both squared and multiplied by 1,000, a two-fold way of emphasizing completeness. It refers to the generation of faithful believers about to enter the final turbulent period that will mark the end of human history. There are 144,000, that's 12,000 from each tribe of Israel, is a symbolic way of stressing that the church is the eschatological people of God who have taken up Israel's inheritance. Their being sealed does not protect them from physical death, but ensures entrance into the heavenly kingdom. It indicates that they will remain faithful in the coming persecution. The idea of the church as the new Israel appears to have grown out of Jesus's promise to his disciples that they would one day sit on 12 thrones, judging the 12 tribes of Israel. Matthew 19, verse 28, also Luke 22, verse 30. Paul writes that the believer in Christ is the true Jew, Romans, chapter 2, verse 29. And he refers to the church as the Israel of God, Galatians 6, 16. James addressed his letter to the 12 tribes in the dispersion when writing to the Christians scattered throughout the Roman world. Peter speaks of believers as a chosen race, a royal priesthood, a holy nation. 1 Peter 2:9. Phrases taken directly from the Old Testament, like Isaiah 43, verse 20, and Exodus 19, verse 6, and reapplied to the New Testament church. Now, I would also point you to Romans, chapter 11. All right, Israel not cast away. Actually, just starting at verse 11 of chapter 11. "I say then, they did not stumble so as to fall, did they? May it never be, but by their transgression salvation has come to the Gentiles, to make them jealous. Now if their transgressions is riches for the world, and their failures riches for the Gentiles, how much more will their fulfillment be? But I am speaking to you, who are Gentiles, inasmuch then, as I am an apostle of Gentiles; I magnify my ministry. If somehow I might move to jealousy my fellow countrymen and save some of them. For if their rejection is the reconciliation of the world, what will their acceptance be, but life from the dead? If the first piece of dough is holy, the lump is also, and if the root is holy, the branches are too. But if some of the branches were broken off, and you being a wild olive were grafted in among them and became partaker with them of the rich root of the olive tree." Okay, everybody tracking? You had a wild tree, it was a Gentiles. There was the olive tree, the original one, right? And branches from the wild tree were grafted into the olive tree. What's the olive tree? Israel. "Do not be arrogant toward the branches. But if you are arrogant, remember that it is not you who supports the root, but the root supports you." Nice little threat. "You will say then, branches were broken off, so that I might be grafted in." Quite right, they were broken off for their unbelief, but you stand by your faith. Do not be conceited, but fear. For if God did not spare the natural branches, he will not spare you either." For if God did not spare the natural branches, he will not spare you either. All right, so we'll leave that one, uh, all right, a couple more verses. Behold then the kindness and severity of God to those who fell, severity but to you, God's kindness. If you continue in his kindness, otherwise you also will be cut off. And they also, if they do not continue in their unbelief, will be grafted in. For God is able to graft them in again. Romans, chapter 11. And I read 11 through 24, or 23. Now also Ephesians, chapter 2. This is a little bit, um, a little more on the nose here. All right, Ephesians, chapter 2, starting at verse 11. This is Paul writing to the church of Ephesus, which was mixed between Jew and Gentile. But here he says, therefore, remember that formerly, formerly, you, the Gentiles in the flesh, who are called uncircumcision by the so-called circumcision, which is performed in the flesh by human hands. So who are we talking to? Gentiles, right? Remember that you were at that time separate from Christ, excluded from the common wealth of Israel, and strangers to the covenants of promise, having no hope and without God in the world. But now, okay, you see that transition there, right? But now in Christ Jesus, you who formerly were far off have been brought near by the blood of Christ. For he himself is our peace, who made both groups into one and broke down the barrier of the dividing wall. So the idea is all of those things formerly, right? You were at the time separate from Christ, excluded from the common wealth of Israel, strangers to the covenants of promise, and having no hope and without God in the world. You can read those as the opposite because of Christ. You are no longer separate from Christ, you are in Christ. Excluded from the common wealth of Israel, no longer, you are now a part of it. Strangers to the covenants of promise? Nope, those covenants are for us too. Having no hope and without God in the world? No, we have hope and we have God in this world. And that is what Christ brings to us as his followers. And that also gives us an identity. And that's why we read our bibles from cover to cover. Because all of those covenants that were mentioned to God's people are being carried forward and will find their fulfillment and are continually finding their fulfillment in Christ. And what we're reading in Revelation. So that's how everything comes together. So God is not saving two different groups in two different ways. There's one body of Christ, period. So, there you go. That's a theory. Just throw that one out there. So. It's what I believe. Any questions on that before we move on? I mean, we're still going to talk about the 144,000, but that was kind of a lie in a very short amount of time. Spend a week reconciling that with your theology? Okay, that's good. Okay, so some commentators would restrict the 144,000 to that portion of the entire church, which in the last days is marked out for martyrdom. The martyrs under the fifth seal cried out for vindication and were told to rest a little while until their full number, until the full number of their fellow servants should be killed. Chapter 6, verses 9 through 11. This interpretation is supported by reference to the prophetic role of the two witnesses in chapter 11 and the 144,000 in chapter 14, who are purchased from among men to be the first fruits unto God. So the arguments for identifying the 144,000 with a select group of martyrs, however, is far from conclusive. The detailed listing of the 12 tribes, as well as the symbolism of the number emphasizes the idea for, of completeness. 12 times 1,000 come from each tribe, no one is excluded. Further, there seems to be no place in Revelation for any believer who will not face martyrdom in the last days. Chapter 13, verse 15, because all who refused to worship the image to be killed. All right. Several irregularities appear in the listing of the 12 tribes. The first is that Judah, rather than Reuben, Jacob's oldest son, heads the list. The reason for this change is obvious, Christ belonged to the tribe of Judah. Hebrews, chapter 7, verse 14. And then even Genesis, chapter 49, verse 10. Giving this priority to Judah would be perfectly natural for a Christian writer. The second is the inclusion of both Manasseh and Joseph. Since Manasseh, as well as his brother Ephraim, who does not occur in the list, is included in Joseph. How many of you got that? Yeah, all right. That's okay. Yeah, so, uh, Manasseh was one of the original 12 sons of Jacob. And he gets divided up into, oh, I'm sorry, I just said that wrong. Joseph, Joseph, one of the 12 sons of Jacob. And he gets divided up into two half tribes that have an inheritance in the promised land. Ephraim and Manasseh. So Joseph is a tribe unto himself, but on Jacob's deathbed, he actually blesses both of the sons and inherits them as his own. And so they both become their own tribes, which is hilarious that we still refer to them as a half tribe. A half tribe is a whole tribe, right? We're, we're getting there. We are getting there, yes. So, um, the answer to this peculi- peculiarity is perhaps bound up with yet another, the omission of Dan. Some have suggested that Dan was inadvertently copied as man, which was later taken as abbreviation for Manasseh. This would solve both problems, unfortunately is only conjecture unsupported by any solid evidence. So there's no textual evidence for it. When the tribe of Dan migrated to the north and settled in Laish, they set up for themselves the graven image. Judges, chapter 18, verse 30. Later, Dan became one of the two great shrines in the northern kingdom. Verse Kings, chapter 12, verse 29. In the testament of Dan, this is apocryphal or pseudographic graphical, Satan is said to be the prince of the tribe. Yikes. Irenaeus, uh, writing in the later, later part of the second century, noted that the omission of Dan was due to a tradition that the antichrist was to come from that tribe. This apparently rested on rabbinic interpretations of such passages as Genesis 49, 17, and Jeremiah 8, verse 16. Whatever the precise reason for omitting Dan, the inclusion of Manasseh was undoubtedly to bring the total number back to 12. Just a side note here, I've also heard because, so actually unpacking a little bit what I'd said before, with the idolatry of Dan, that idolatry was an immediate disqualifier of that tribe. So one, they had already given up their tribal inheritance in the south. So what God had allotted to them, they had refused it and went to the north, which was the furthest remove from any other territory. And so they were practically living as, um, kind of in the realm of Syria. So, or the Amorites at that time. So they had disqualified themselves as like a continuing member of the tribe of Israel. Past the time of the judges. So idolatry was disqualifier. Uh, there seems to be no reason, particular reason for the order in which the tribes are given. The sequence should not be surprising in that the tribes are listed in some 18 different orders in the Old Testament, none of which agrees with the order in Revelation. You caught that, right? There's 18 different versions of this list in the Old Testament, and here we have a new one. So fun Bible trivia, how many different lists of the tribes are there in the Bible? 19. By placing verses 5 and 6 after 8, one writer organized the list into the sons of Leah, Rachel, and Zilpa, Leah's maid, and Bilha, Rachel's maid. However that may be, the various irregularities of the list do not affect the interpretation of the passage. The 144,000 are faithful believers about to enter the period of final testing. So the two main theories, the 144,000 is ethnic Israelites. And some of the problems with that is that the 10 tribes, 10 northern tribes, got dispersed much earlier than Judah, Benjamin, and Levi were. Now, a little caveat to that is that, oh, well, maybe the faithful in the northern state of Israel migrated south. Right? Because they didn't want to put up with all the idolatry and they wanted to be near Jerusalem. That's a theory. We don't have any evidence of it within the text in the Old Testament. We just don't. But it's still, it's still there, right? The other idea is that instead of this being ethnic Israel, this is spiritual Israel, right? This is the grafting in of all the Gentiles. And really what this is pointing to, not a literal 12,000 from each of these tribes, since the tribes themselves would be somewhat irrelevant at this point. But what we would have is now a complete number. So all the believers, the faithful believers at that time of the final testing being marked. Oh, yeah. Question was, is there, so Ephraim in the Old Testament, Jeremiah, Ezekiel, there's a few places where Ephraim is used to describe the northern tribes. So the northern state of Israel, right? And, um, is there any significance to Ephraim being left off the list? Whereas a number of the other northern tribes are mentioned. Now, mind you, they're not just northern tribes, there's actually tribes on the east side of the Jordan that really kind of fall into non-existence much sooner than what we have the southern kingdom. So in the same timeframe as the northern kingdom being dispersed, a lot of those tribes on the east side of the Jordan do as well. So I don't know what that significance would be. Other than a lot of that would be encompassed by the rest of the list. But still not all of it. So, yeah, I don't know. It's, I'll just chalk that one up to a mystery, right? I mean, just because out of 19 different lists that are mentioned, why do we have these? So, no, great question though. Yeah, it could definitely exemplify just kind of the mixing up of, you know, it's just, it's one, it's list number 19 in the Bible. And maybe just to illustrate that it is pointing out to maybe spiritual Israel instead of ethnic Israel. Uh, hence the redundancy with Joseph and, um, Manasseh. So, yeah, good thoughts. All right, so moving on here. So the second vision of chapter 7 stands in marked contrast to the first. Instead of 144,000, there appears a great multitude that no one can number. Rather than being sealed for the impending persecution, they are said to have come out of the great tribulation. No longer on earth, they crowd the throne room of heaven, wearing victors robes and bearing the emblem of festive joy. The new vision anticipates a glorious day, yet future, when those who are to pass through the final persecution will enter the blessedness of the eternal state. The innumerable multitude includes far more than 144,000 of the previous vision. All the faithful of every age are there. Some have been called upon to give their lives as martyrs. All have been prepared to pay the price of fidelity. They cry out in a loud voice, declaring that it is God and to the Lamb that they owe their salvation. The heavenly entourage, angels, elders, and living creatures fall before the throne and worship God. Who are these dressed in white robes and from where did they come? Ask one of the elders. Answering his own question, he identifies the innumerable multitude as those who have come out of the great tribulation and washed their robes in the blood of the Lamb. They stand before God in the righteousness of Christ. God blesses them with protection and freedom from want. The Lamb leads them to springs of joy and the tears of earth's sorrows are wiped away by God himself. So the purpose of the vision is to grant a glimpse of eternal blessedness to those about to enter the world's darkest hour. For a brief period, John is privileged to look beyond this age to the hour of ultimate triumph. The entire scene is not unlike the transfiguration in which Jesus revealed his coming glory to disciples who had only recently learned of the suffering that lay ahead for the son of man. Without doubt is one of the most exalted portrayals of the heavenly state to be found anywhere in scripture. There are no less than three, um, different sections of praise and the lyric prose of verses 15 through 17 is charged with a spiritual excitement that has caused the faithful of all ages to yearn for that final redemption. So remember the context, right? John is writing to these seven churches. This vision that he is having. And these churches are about to undergo a period of persecution. And so he is encouraging them. Even if martyrdom happens, here is your final state. You will be before the throne of almighty God. You will be in his presence. You will never have need for food or drink. There will be no more pain or suffering, no more hurt. God himself, the one that on earth, that if you were to be in his presence, you would just imagine like just dropping dead because of his holiness. You would be in his presence and he would wipe the tears off of your face. That's pretty comforting. I mean, if you were undergoing that level of persecution, maybe day in and day out, how many times would you come back to these words? How many times would you remind somebody else of this vision? And that's what it's for. That is absolutely what it's for. When you are considering selling out and worshiping Caesar because you've already lost your business, maybe your spouse is already thrown in jail. And now you've heard that they're coming for you. All you have to do, all you have to do, just take a little pinch of incense and throw it on some burning coals and say Caesar is Lord. And that's it, all the trouble will cease. That's all you have to do. But by refusing to do that, you have made your life so incredibly difficult. Compromised your own safety, your spouse's safety, your kids' safety, their future. I mean, just forget about sending them to public school. So that, that's, that's the terms. That's what we're looking at. And it's a matter of being faithful to God even unto death. Of giving up your own life because you refuse to just pinch that little bit of incense and to say those three words. Caesar is Lord. It's all you have to do. That's the temptation. We don't have to expect something big. Like, and you know, so as we're approaching this book, right? That we're reading it, we're reading it from a mindset of two thousand years ago, how would these churches have received it? And it's not to say that, oh, all of this was been fulfilled and it's done and over with and it's just good reading now. That's not how we're reading this. We're reading that many, much of this has happened, has been fulfilled, but then has continually been fulfilled over the last two thousand years. Could be in different countries, different parts of the world, different communities. Whatever it was. And yet there will still be a time of the end when all of this will be, reach a crescendo. But for us today, this is where we have to ask ourselves is where, where is this level of compromise? Where is that creeping into our world? And it's only, I think, through prayer and asking God and inviting the Holy Spirit to open our eyes to where that is. Because I mean, it's kind of the frog in the boiling pot, right? I mean, could be, trust me, we want this to be as blatant as possible. Because we're like, nope, that's wrong, definitely not doing that. You know, like something right hand or on your forehead. But what if, what if it was just burning incense? And just saying those three words. What is that comparable to today? That, that is scriptural interpretation where we are translating it from one context to our own. Where the principle still stands, it's a one-to-one that we are looking at. How do we live as followers of God today? That's our challenge in front of us. But regardless, it's a matter of us being willing to give up our lives to hold to the truth. Even unto death, we are not renouncing Christ. We are not renouncing God. We are not renouncing fill in the blank. That lines up with Scripture. What does that look like today? Now, first and foremost, don't take somebody else's word on it. Read the Bible. Know what Scripture says. Seek the Lord. And how is the Holy Spirit leading you to live this out? Well, and the challenge is for each and every one of us, when we read Scripture, not to change it. Not to skip over the uncomfortable parts. Not the things that are maybe just a little bit foreign to us. And now, it's even more dangerous as you do it collectively, but that's why there has to be a continual challenge for each and every one of us to read Scripture ourselves. So I will say. Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine, like a hand grenade. And so so I, okay, all right, standing up for this one. So I will say this, that that's the danger of associations. There, there is a level. All right, there's a, there is a level of stupid when a whole bunch of people get together. I'm just gonna say that like, that's, that is where there is a softening, there is not a people become less rooted. And it's more of, that's where you get the group think. And that's where all of a sudden you get a bunch of people together and you want to keep a bunch of people together. And so you want to avoid anything that's divisive. And so it's just, it does a disservice. Because that's when there's compromise. That's why, like, what I will continually like come back to is an individual. Like each of us, an individual responsibility to read God's Word. And I would say cover to cover, every bit of it. And I mean, obviously I have my own theological perspectives on the importance of reading it from cover to cover. Actually, that'll come up in a couple of chapters, but I'll, I'll leave that one for then. But still, it's one of those things that, yes, I mean, we need to be careful of what our associations are. Because any of those things, even if they start out well-meaning, can lead us astray. I mean, you know, if willing, this would never happen, but if CCC was to just go off the rails. And we don't need to talk about what that looks like. But if it were, oh, I'm out of a job. Or am I? What kind of stand do I need to take? Or do I need to be the the one still trying to preach repentance or, you know, get back on the rails, you know, whatever? So what does that look like? And so, you know, there's just, it has all of its challenges in its own, but that's where individually we need to understand what the foundation of truth looks like. So I, I really do, I love that CCC does not belong to a broader association of churches. I, I really, in this day and age, I really value that. Now, there's a lot of things that we probably lose out on. But I think the trade-off for independence is, is better. So, but then again, could also say that, oh, maybe we lack accountability. If there was a broader association, maybe there are other churches that could speak into them and be like, whoa, what are you guys doing? So there's arguments being made both ways. But for me personally, in this day and age, I like, I value our independence, but that might go into my own ideology, so. Yeah, thanks, guys, for bringing all the contentious stuff up tonight. See who comes back next week. Maybe just a lot more people with popcorn. I spent all week thinking up these questions to ask Luke in front of everybody. That's right, that's right. But no, I mean, that is as, you know, as we're thinking about the text and what this means to us. I mean, granted, we're just talking about like, oh, no, you know, like, I gotta not associate with this, you know, church or this group or whatever. I mean, we just got done reading about martyrdom. We just got done reading about people who had already given up their lives and were before the throne. The fact that God felt like he needed to give John a vision of this to pass along to other believers, contemporaries with him. There's a certain gravity there, right? That's heavy. And even though we dwell in our own security. First world country, however you want to say that. It could change. It could change overnight, it could change in a week. And so just how fragile our society is, right? Shut the power off for three days and see how civil everybody is. It, it wouldn't even take three days, no, that's right. Just, but you know, that is that's a challenge. Yeah. Well, so, so even to that is this daily building of faith, of relying and looking to God. I mean, I think a lot of times, we're just thinking like, oh, when, when the big stuff happens, that's when I'm gonna look to God. But at what point are we looking to Him even in these situations, the day-to-day situations? And at what point are we even passing that along to our kids? I mean, to your point, that's beautiful to, you know, to see that and to see God working in that even at a young age. For grandkids, for, you know, and just to, just to instill that in them because they're, like, your faith can't be theirs. They need to know the Lord. They need to know how to rely upon Him. All you can do is point. And even just give testimony to how you were able to do that. Absolutely, and you know, it's being faithful in little things, oh, you'll be given much. Right? And here we go, like, day in and day out, what does that look like? And it's not too late, I mean, if you still have breath in your lungs and your heart's still beating. Congratulations, this might be day one, but you know, like, let's start giving things over to the Lord and being faithful in that and putting ourselves out there and really relying on Him. And how's that gonna impact your life? How is that gonna impact the lives of those around you? So absolutely, great example. We, we did get through the one hundred and forty-four thousand. We did, we absolutely did. What's our takeaway for the one hundred and forty-four thousand? It's good, I appreciate that question. So No, 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 we're good. That was so great. That was awesome, was who's in first service? Got to hear that, that was so perfect. I was like, could you come back second service? It's awesome. So when I was talking about the fall, reading from Genesis three. There was a, I mean, toddler, maybe even younger, just said, uh-oh, in the back. And like, I could hear it from the front and it was just adorable and it was just the most perfect timing ever. And I'm like, that's right, uh-oh, yep. So, but, but yeah, our takeaway for the one hundred and forty-four thousand. So God is getting ready to do something that is gonna alter the course of the world. Right? As we're reading this chronologically, like, you know, in the, in the sequence of events. And He pauses so that the one hundred and forty-four thousand can be sealed. And I think the, the takeaway for us is not a matter of like, oh, am I in or out? Right? I mean, there are certain groups, Christian or cult, however you wanna see that. That believe that there's only one hundred and forty-four thousand believers. Period. I think their membership is way beyond that, just in the United States, but we don't have to tell anybody. But, you know, it's one of those things that taking this symbolically, taking this as the people of God is, it, it gives us that challenge. It presents a, because in the next few verses, we see where they end up. Right? Where there are a multitude of believers before the throne. That came through the tribulation. But first, there's this one hundred and forty-four thousand that gets sealed. So that they are not destroyed by these environmental disasters. And what are they saved to? They're saved to go and preach repentance. And to go and minister to those who are left. And remember the last verses of chapter six? I know it was a totally different chapter, which is arbitrary, by the way. All right, we could read the last verse of six and roll right into seven. Okay, just a reminder. Like, that ends with kings and commanders and all these people hiding in caves, calling for the mountains, the rocks to fall on them to hide them from the wrath of God and from the Lamb. Then enter environmental disasters and then, oh, wait a second, seal this group of believers. Maybe it's all the believers that are left on the earth. And that's basically what's being brought up by it being a symbolic number. It's the complete, it's all of the believers on the earth at that time. That they will be protected from those disasters because they have a mission. And do you think that that was the first? I mean, was that just all the people that maybe had shared Christ that day? Or the first time that they had picked up their Bible to read? Or they had just come to Christ that day? Probably not. Even though we're dealing with a symbolic number, even though we're dealing with a scenario that may or may not be literal. But what we're talking about are believers who are living out their faith. And God has preserved them for this time because there's a job to do. But they were already doing the job. They were already on mission and sharing the gospel and living this out and taking care of those around them. That's the challenge for each and every one of us. Let's live like the one hundred and forty-four thousand today. And so let's just not be surprised when things get worse. Let's live with that level of dedication. And the gravity of like, oh, I've got a job to, like, waking up, I know what I need to do. If you don't know what to do as a follower of Jesus Christ, let's talk. Because it's important, it's important for each and every one of us. Right? There's this overarching like, oh, the Great Commission, I need to carry that forward. I need to share the gospel, I need to make disciples. Great, what does that look like in your context? Because our context might individually be different. But that's the fun part, it's not cookie cutter. I can't even just pass out a bunch of workbooks and say, hey, take as many people as you can through that book. Because it's individual context, right? That's what we're passing along is understanding what does the gospel look like? What does the transformative power of the gospel look like in this person's life, in this person's life? What does it look like in your life? Part of that transformation is going out and replicating. Going out and sharing the gospel and making disciples. That is what we're doing until Jesus comes back. Twelve tribes are just symbolic number encompassing, so as there were nineteen different lists in the Bible, it was still just to speak to like all of Israel. And that's why we're also talking about spiritual Israel and the grafting in of the Gentiles and just kind of this new thing that Paul. I mean, I definitely think it was a Paul, a part of Paul's theology. Yeah, because, and this is the beautiful part of like what Paul writes, especially in Ephesians, you are no longer Gentiles. You are no longer separated from Christ. You were those things, but now you're not. And I mean, that's the exciting part, I mean, it really, really is. And that's our identity, that's our identity in Christ. It's not a matter of being a Gentile. Because Gentile meant of like not knowing God. So what happens when you know God? Like, was Rahab a Gentile? Was Ruth a Gentile? They ceased to be when they were grafted into the family of God. So that's, yeah, that's, and that's why we can like hearken back to the covenants and everything else. It just all comes together nice and neat. Um, it is significant. It might be a little bit more simple than what you think. So, okay, all right, that's where we'll leave off. Thank you, guys. That's where we'll leave off. Uh, thank you, guys, uh, for the challenge that was tonight and all the wonderful questions. No, really, they were excellent questions. And there needs to be a space where we can ask those. And if I ever come to that point of like, I don't know, I'll do some research and get back with you on that. Like, I will definitely do that. But there's other points where I just want to wrestle with, how do I articulate this? With maybe modern sensitivities and just understanding, right? Of which sometimes my dark humor comes out and all of that's out the window anyways. So anyways, thanks for being a part of tonight. I appreciate all of you for being here.